Just getting back to the A one school. You're saying five hundred and thirty thousand dollars would take care of that building? Take care of that fence or what is that five hundred and thirty, take care of it?
The fence is there because we had some masonry failures and some Brexit falling down. The engineer back in two thousand and seven, I mean, the numbers are amusing, they have not been accelerated. Estimated around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars repairs to the building. Since that time, we've gone out to do some repairs in the corners. That number would be low. Corners falling out in that area, there are cracks, the whole building needs to be reconnected. In the interface between the roof and the corners, you wouldn't rebuild the corners the way they built in eighteen ninety-five because of the labor intensity of putting that belt in the corners. So, we'd have to go back with a different system, probably need the system and then make some modifications to the roof. That number would most likely be closer to probably three hundred and fifty thousand, but that would fix the A one school, the masonry. Questions, Councilor Hahn?
A question like, I don't know if I heard you right, so we spend, so let's say we take money from the state and we spend more than five hundred thousand dollars on that particular school and it's not being kept, this school has to put an elevator in, is that right?
It's part of their, their two villages, when they invited us in for an accelerated repairs, the marsh, excuse me, for the green and tech, one of the things they did was they had us pull up permits and the remaining money that we spent in the past five years. It's a three-year look back that they want to see back five years to show whether or not we actually have put money in that these projects would force us to do something to make the building more unique and accessible. Now, both the green and tech. Well, in green anyways, we have an elevator. Tech, I think we do, I can't remember. But, so green is less of a concern with unique app accessibility and for some reason in tech, I want to say there's an elevator there too. So, that, that's really not too big of an issue, make the change, babbles and reconfigure some toilets, I would say the word like that, other than that. Councilor Seer?
Getting back to the elevator of A one school. Spent five hundred and thirty thousand bucks. See, windows, these things, they stand in your door. Windows make certain doors there, but I don't see a elevator. And I know there's not an elevator in that building.
The list is alphabetical, it's not by priorities. I mean, I'm going to try to point the point, but if the city had none women supplied money or some women supplied money, the A one school would not be the first school I would repair. I would advise the council that if you're going to put money into buildings, you put money into buildings that are relatively new. Green, county, and wood, things that were built after, let's say, nineteen fifty. Buildings that have another service life of fifty to sixty years and not even building that's now a hundred and two years old that is already well past its service life. So, this is not, this is an alphabetical list of repairs that are required for various buildings, not prioritization of those repairs or recommendation for prioritization of those repairs.
I appreciate you wanting this, I don't know what council. Even though you're all about the law and all that, A one school isn't my what and it's a concern to me, so it is probably number one along with Ingalls, Cook, and Marsh and stuff, and I appreciate you wanting this, Mike, I really do, it's one of the things I always admire, but it's still a priority.
Any other questions?
If I can, for the table, one time, nothing. You did indicate that the LVTI roof and green windows were scheduled to be done, completed in April, May of two thousand and thirteen?
So, we will get MSBA approval in this December. They have to approve it, the project at their December meeting, and if they do approve the project, it all depends on financing for them to, where the estimates come in. We get a project agreement and then we would yes, we would proceed to do that work in the spring or summer of two thousand and thirteen.
Have you estimated the increase since two thousand and seven figures as to what it may be today?
Well, the actual prices that I have here are current price, I didn't know those prices that came out of the statistics that we just completed. So, we're looking at, you know, slightly open, the three point four million dollars is a number that's still in flux. The engineer and the OPM are having discussions of whether the three point four million is valid. The two point ones are pretty, pretty, not solid, but they're both in agreement on the two point one, so we go twenty percent. And last question before I turn it back over to the council. Eighty percent reimbursement rate, it's obviously a beautiful thing for the city. Has anybody identified the ballpark, one point one million dollar cost from the city side, where those funds would come from? Of those April, May, LVTI and green projects? Once the MSBA approves these projects, or if they will in December, the city has to put the financing up, I believe it's with the ninety days, you know, to vote to appropriate the funding. Where that funding would come from, the CFO can answer that question better. Generally, when we do a construction project, I believe, we borrow short term to get through the construction project using bond anticipation notes and then at the completion of the projects, they go out and they borrow for the total cost of the project once the project is done, which would be, you know, a year from now. But I would assume that the council will be asked to appropriate that money somehow. Questions, Councilor? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mike, I've heard a lot of facts and figures from you today, so I'm hoping that there's some kind of plan to come back before us next year and asking us for some money to go out and follow and make significant repairs to our schools, which I would fully support.
You don't have to say anything, okay. Councilor Hahn?
Thank you, but Mike, just to touch on, Councilor Kay, if we get the money for like winter and in December and for green, if they approve us a state, we're going to need that money within ninety days, right? That one point one million?
You need to vote to appropriate the money and then we have a time period, we have to go out to bid after that. And at that point, we block in the numbers plus a small contingency, obviously with the contract price. So, again, this is better for the CFO, how, once you vote to appropriate means he can go get the money. How he gets that, I don't really know all the time.
So, it's actually going to be less than a year? When the Council Kay knows everything, maybe in a year we'll see you that case where those repairs, but if we get that state reimbursement, Council President Feels has a wonderful thing, eighty percent, we're going to need at least one one million right, right off the bat, right? Well, within ninety days?
Yes.
Because that's what you said, so we need to think about that in the next, you know, half, half of the summer.
Councilor Seer?
Thank you. I might be talking a little bit, but also the process of working with the state. The way I understand the process, we're going to be looking for money in July because we're going to, our timeline is May when they come back to our foundation, where the location is going to be, and we're going to have to come up with the money in July for that project as well, right?
Yes, it's anticipated with the board, the MSBA board, and June, at the June meeting, I think June fifth, would vote to approve the project. We have a hundred and twenty days to vote to appropriate our share of the class, which would be twenty percent of anywhere between fifty to sixty-five million dollars. And a point of information, I apologize, I believe most of the councils know that, well, Dr. Latham is here this evening. She has been invited to make a similar presentation at the next council meeting, which is a week from today, regarding the specifics of the Marshallville School, and I know that she's also having a, and the school committee is having a public presentation, I believe, tomorrow evening, which everyone's been invited to as well. Councilor?
Mike, I want to thank you for coming to discuss this update. And besides all the big money projects, I want to thank you for the past couple of years for your lighting, neighborhood concerns, trees, retaining tool, intersection work, the Felix seating, the parking issues with the soccer. But hopefully we can get a new football field, but that seems like small potatoes now. And soundproofing, the heating and air conditioning, which is a piece of neighbors, so thank you for all the work that, the smaller of all.
You're welcome. Any additional questions for Mr. Dunbar? Thank you.
Public Caring?
First petition to MetroPCS, Ellen O'Brien Wilson for permission to add one dish antenna to existing rooftop wires communication facility of Kings Beach Towers, one thirty East and Avenue.
Open the public hearing, anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in favor, please, Councilor, please?
Evening, Mr. President, council members, my name is Brian Wilson, representing MetroPCS. MetroPCS is a nationwide provider of telecommunications and high-speed data services. We are predominantly known as a value service provider in low-cost and high-speed data across the country. We currently have a wireless communication facility at Kings Beach Tower, one thirty Eastern Ave. And in order to provide our customers in the city with better high-speed service, we are requesting a special permit to add one, one foot microwave dish to the existing penthouse of the facility. This is a minor expansion of the existing use, which the council determined was appropriate for this property. And if anyone would like to see, I have some closed invitations, which I can pass around, if you could share.
Thank you.
If you could, if you want to close for the record, it will be very good to serve. This one antenna would be painted to match the facade of the building and should not derogate the neighborhood in terms of appearance, there would be no noise or additional emissions, we are making no changes to our cabinets that are on the roof. So, this is a very minor addition to the facility, in our opinion, and we respectfully request that you grant our request for a special permit to modify the facility.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody who should speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing no one who should speak in opposition? Close the public hearing for all those in opposition, close the public hearing. Councilor Seer?
Mr. President, may I, for you to, to our right?
Motion made, seconded, to approve, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay, yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Public hearing?
The next public hearing is a petition of American Building Technologies, our main striker for permission to transform a vacant second and period floor warehouse space into three apartments and one office for existing business at two sixty-three Western Avenue.
Open the public hearing for anybody who should speak in favor? Anybody who should speak in favor? Anybody in favor, seeing no one who should speak in favor? Close the public hearing for all those in favor, open the public hearing for anybody in opposition? Anybody who should speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing no one who should speak in opposition? Close the public hearing for all those in opposition? Close the public hearing, Councilor Lozey?
Mr. President, I spoke with the owner and we still, we agreed that we would like to have a neighborhood meeting. So, I'd like to table this public hearing.
Motion made, table, seconded, non-debatable, roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
And before we go to the next public hearing, I'm going to take a little liberty from the chair. And once again, it seems like I do this every six months, recognize Seth Olive one more time. I think if, if people saw the Chronicle piece on the city of Lynn, which really was a great piece, that I got a lot of feedback, it was very positive, really pumped up what's happening in Lynn. I'd like to commend Seth for his appearance and what he did in being a great ambassador for the city of Lynn, so, once again. Thank you.
Petition of Verizon Robert Garcia for permission to place approximately two hundred and sixteen feet of underground conduit on Tremont Street, approximately seventy-five feet of underground conduit on Market Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council, for the recommendation of Joseph Polisim, subway agent Verizon, Inc. Our new office is located at twenty Shattuck Road in Andover. Petition before the council, thinking is we're pushing to lay, construct approximately two hundred and ninety-one feet cumulatively of underground conduit along both Market and Tremont Streets here in Lynn. Conduit run would be constructed from existing manhole one fifty-one A, which is at the intersection of Liberty Street and Market Street, and we would run that conduit southerly, as I'm sure is shown on the plan that you have in front of you, to the premises of thirty-five Tremont Street, which is a building which is part of, I believe, St. Mary's High School. Purpose of this conduit run, I am told, is that this is part of the LFA agreement, the local franchise agreement with the city of Lynn relative to the fiber rollout by Verizon here in the city of Lynn. My engineers tell me that this is a requirement of that agreement relative to the fiber rollout. I'm also advised that the premises of thirty-five Tremont Street is what's called the Ministry of Rock location. So, for both of those reasons, Verizon is requesting this conduit path to effectuate its provisions and requirements under the LFA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing no one who should speak in opposition? Close the public hearing, close in opposition, close the public hearing. Councilor Freiter?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Next petition is petition of East Coast International Church, current length of permission for assigned permit at fifty-seven sixty-five Monroe Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody in favor?
I am current length pastor of East Coast International Church, and we just need to get a sign in front of our building.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition? Anybody who should speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing no one who should speak in opposition? Close the public hearing, follows in opposition, close the public hearing, Councilor Freiter?
Mr. President, through you and to the members, I'd like to speak in favor of this petition. I've known Kurt for quite some time now, he's truly a leader in his church as well as the community. He's doing a lot of great things down in Monroe Street, so, again, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden? Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan? Yes, eleven, yes. Next petition, petition of Jimmy's Discount Liquors, Jimmy Hill, for permission for assigned permit at eight seventy-three Western Avenue.
Open the public hearing for anybody who should speak in favor?
Hello, you, President, I'm, I'm, Councilor, my name is George Francis, I'm a company named Francis Science, more business, based on the city of Lynn. Just, um, up here, if any of the councils have any questions about the sign.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition? Anybody who should speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing no one who should speak in opposition? Close the public hearing for all those in opposition, close the public hearing, Councilor Capano? Yeah, motion granted. Motion made, seconded, to grant, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. We have public hearings to set down, I can read them together, if you want to separate any. Victoria's Christian Army Ministry, Victoria G. W., for permission to start a church ministry at twenty-four Bassett Street. Petition of Comcast, Timothy Broderick, for permission to place one three-inch PVC conduit forty-five feet plus or minus from existing manhole in front of one eighty-two Washington Street in a southerly direction to property of one eighty-three, one eighty-five Washington Street. Petition of proposed retail development, James Mitchell Tropical State Development, to allow retail use in a light industrial zone at forty-seven Boston Street. Petition of proposed retail development, James Mitchell Tropical State Development, to allow retail use in a light industrial zone at fifty-five Boston Street. Petition of proposed retail development, James Mitchell Tropical State Development, to allow retail use in a light industrial zone at sixty-five Boston Street.
What's the wish of the council? Motion made, set down for public hearing, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay? Yes, Councilor Capano? Absent Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Unfinished business from the Finance Committee meeting of September twenty-fifth. Order that the city controller is hereby authorized to transfer the sum of six thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars in arrow cents from the general fund revenue rebate account to the ISD maintenance service contracts account. Order that the city controller is hereby authorized to transfer the sum of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents from the various DPW accounts to the account of unpaid bills of prior years DPW. Order that the city controller be hereby authorized to transfer the sum of three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars from the Lot Apartment Legal Services account to unpaid bills of prior years law.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay? Yes, Councilor Capano? Absent Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Adopt permanently an order that the city of Lynn accept the provisions in chapter forty-three D of Massachusetts General Law as amended pursuant to section eleven of chapter two oh five of the Act of two thousand and six and to approve the filing of an application with the Interagency Permitting Board for the designation of land at two fifty-four Linway, parcel oh six seven seven four nine one twenty-four two ten to two twenty-six Blossom Street, eight ten Linway, and Blossom Street parcel oh oh six seven five one oh one five and oh six six seven five one oh two oh and two seventy-six Linway. As a priority development site or take any other action in relation thereto, this was adopted with emergency on September twenty-fifth.
Which means it has to be adopted permanently. Motion to approve, Councilor Freiter? Second, roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Committee reports, ways and means, committee, there are two orders that both mean an emergency. Do you want me to?
Please.
Do the point. First one is order that the city clerk be directed to present notice to be advertised at the meetings. Qualified voters of the city of Lynn will be held in the several polling places here to for designated for the state election on Tuesday, the sixth day of November twenty twelve. And the second one is, um, I don't know if you can follow this. Second one is order that the EDIC prepare a TIF tax incremental financing agreement for Dimitri's Bakery at forty-one Southern Street. Ways and means?
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
And on the emergency roll call?
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Ordinance committee, there's two public hearings to be set down for public hearing, one is on a proposed ordinance amending the ordinance relative to zoning within the city of Lynn, and the other is to set down a public hearing on an ordinance amending the ordinance created in the Human Rights Commission in the city of Lynn.
Discussion, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
License committee?
The name of the committee, motion.
Do I have a second? Discussion, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Hi, yes, we have several orders, I can read them, we can separate them if you want.
If there's no objection, we'll read them all, if anybody wants to take any individually, we'll do so.
Order that the city controller be authorized to transfer the following from the account of reserve account to the account of warrants and execution judgments, fifteen thousand, from the account of excess workers' comp expense to the account of workers' comp insurance premiums, nineteen thousand, from the account of reserve fund to the account of debt service interest expense, twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from the account of reserve account to the account of pensions, non-ditributive toll, two hundred dollars to the account of pensions, non-ditributive fifty-nine A, one hundred dollars from the account of insurance recoupments and fight upon vehicles R and M, to the account of bills of prior years, fourteen thousand nine hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents. Certifiers available fund the amount of thirty thousand nine, thirty thousand ninety dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Grant, Grant Period seven one twelve to six thirty thirteen. Certifiers available fund the amount of five hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the spent nine four one forty-two allocation point, Grant Period nine one twelve to eight thirty one thirteen. Certifiers available fund the amount of one million one hundred twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the spent nine four one forty-two, Grant Period is nine eighteen eight to eight thirty one thirteen. Certifiers available fund the amount of five hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the ARRA School Improvement Grant for Connor School, Grant Period is nine one twelve to eight thirty one twelve. Certifiers available fund the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the ARRA School Improvement Grant for Harrington School, Grant Period is nine one twelve to eight thirty one thirteen. Certifiers available fund the amount of five hundred two thousand three hundred and three dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the Kinder Enhancement Program Grant, Grant Period is eight one twelve to six thirty thirteen. Certifiers available fund the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred and five dollars as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant, Grant Period is seven one twelve to six thirty thirteen, and order that the Department of Public Works be allowed to make expenditures for snow and ice control in excess of the appropriation for those across pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one D. Don't ask me to repeat them.
Councilor Palucci? The name of the finance committee, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiten?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey? Yes, Council Lozey, yes. Council Net, yes. Yes, Council Phelan, yes. Yes, Council Trahan, yes. 11, yes. And they've requested emergency.
Is there emergency, Council? I'll take that as a form of motion. Do I have a second? Discussion, roll call.
Council Barton, yes. Council Cahill, yes. Yes, Council Capano, yes. Council Palucci, yes. Council Creighton, yes. Yes, Council Seer, yes. Yes, Council Ford, yes. Yes, Council Lozey, yes. Council Net, yes. Yes, Council Phelan, yes. Yes, Council Trahan, yes. 11, yes.
New business? Council Cahill, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add an item on the October 23rd agenda, the public hearings to be set down. I make a motion to place on the October 23rd the council agenda of the whole, a request for setting down a public hearing for a formula delugon order to be held by the council as a whole at the meeting November 13th. So I'm putting it down, to be put down.
Second. So this is for next Tuesday's meeting, not the November meeting. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Council Seer.
I mean, how come? What we got tonight from Mike Donovan, Inspection Services, giving us the guidance to prepare our schools, and I know there's other issues in the city, and I really, really honestly commend Brendan and Dan for wanting to put money into the infrastructure of the city. It definitely really needs it, our parks really need a rebuild, but I also feel a little slight, to be honest.
Can I interrupt? And I know what your motion's going to be, but you probably want more detail, because I know we just have a.
I have put on the agenda to set down a public hearing for November 13th for a $4 million bond order, no?
Yeah, can you just repeat that? A motion to place on the October 23rd council of the whole agenda.
Yep.
Request for the setting down of a public hearing for a $4 million bond order that would, the public hearing would be held before the council of all on the November 13th. Could you state what the bond, the $4 million bond order would be? I think we need that. You might have to ask if that's.
No, actually, I don't believe in chair, man.
Sorry? I doubt the rule of the chair. Counselor. And I could be wrong. Motion is made to put down a $4 million bond order. Do we need to, to set clear on the agenda for $4 million? Do we need to know what the $4 million is for?
I would think that you need to have some declaration of what the potential of the bond is, yes.
If I can drive to the clerk, she can read it.
Proposed projects, Barrack Park Field Reconfiguration and Improvement, do I need to put the amounts of $75,000? Root Park Courts, $150,000, City Hall Flagpole, $20,000, City Hall Service and Fiber Optics, $350,000. City Hall Steps, $250,000. Black Street Playground, $50,000. Cork Street Playground, $60,000. Frazier Field Roof, $390,000. Frazier Field Turf, $200,000. Frye Playground and Courts, $60,000. Gallagher Playground and Courts, $98,000. Grand Army of the Republic Museum facade, $150,000. Lynn Crumb's Bandstand Rehabilitation, $225,000. Lynn Crumb's Fountain, Reap Year, $75,000. Lynn Memorial Auditorium, Year Conditioning, $600,000. Lynn Woods Entrance Restaurants, $100,000. McMoyle Playground and Courts, $50,000. McManus Veil, $400,000. Miscellaneous School Repairs, $50,000. Protective Office, Glass Barry, $75,000. Sagmo Street Playground, $50,000. Seaport Marina Repairs and Way of Tenure, $500,000. Sheridan Street Playground, $22,000.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded by Council Craig. I apologize for interrupting, Council Seer.
Thank you. Again, I feel this way, I've only had two conversations with my dad, it's a stolen penny. I've been part of, putting together this wish list of repairs to be done in the city. I mentioned Brendan in a couple of conversations that I did have about my concerns, told him that it wasn't just the parks, my blood, I wanted to see Williams out, Goldfish Pond, Kindred Park, and yet, I just listened to Mike Donovan talk about the $28 million to repair a bunch of schools. I had $50,000 by anyone when it's over $500,000, I understand that, not even $50,000, it's $50,000 miscellaneous of schools. I think it's irresponsible for us to put this down for public hearing without all of us sitting down and saying exactly what we would like to see taken care of in the city. There are streets that have to be fixed, there are sidewalks that have to be fixed, I mean, the list goes on and on and on, and I would have liked to have been a part of that, who can I go? I think someone had to follow councilists, be able to say, "What? I am not opposed to this." What I'm saying is that we have to take time before we do this. And the reason I say that is because we got some big issues coming up, we have plastic where we need to put over a couple million dollars into that school for the next year or so. We got a middle school, Marshall, coming up, that we're going to need $15 to $16 million in reimbursement, that's going to be a city's problem. And I mean, you know, honestly, if you're going to do it, let me put something, a million, point, whatever it's going to take to fix plastic. Now what that means is you have to put it out to the voters in Southwest Illinois, it should be put out to the voters, go over $4 million. That's why you don't want to say $4 million. It looks like we're trying to bamboozle the voters of the city. There's a blood counselor, I only see $50,000 out of $4 million coming into my blood counselor, I'm really upset about it, and I'm going to tell you why. Because, why? Because this is.
Point of order, councilors with names and other councilors by name, okay?
I didn't, I.
Council Seer. If we get one, excuse me, one at a time, please, one at a time.
I'm upset.
Okay.
And I am upset.
Okay. Counsel Palucci made a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
Second.
I'm concerned.
Mr. President, I asked for your attention before Counsel Palucci made that motion. Is it, we just, I want everyone to calm down for a minute, okay? Everyone take a deep breath. Counsel Palucci made a motion, it was seconded and walked out. If he's close, bring him in, if he's not close.
I believe I still have the phones.
There's a motion to table, non-debatable. I'm going to try to keep a level of decorum here. Three minutes left, question. Motion to table, okay. All set. Counsel Palucci going to state a vote on the motion to table. Roll call.
Council Barton.
No.
No. Council Cahill, no. No. Council Capano, no. No. Council Palucci, yes. Yes, Council Creighton, no. No. Council Seer, yes. Council Ford, yes. Yes, Council Lozey, yes. Council Net, no. Council Phelan, yes. Yes, Council Trahan, yes. Six, yes.
Any other new business?
Mr. President.
Counsel Craig.
Mr. President, I have a few questions about the council rules as well as proceedings that I'd like to ask the city's officials' office.
Attorney Vitale.
Attorney Vitale, just in terms of the city charter, the ordinance, who has the power to set items on the agenda for council parents?
The practice has been, and the rules essentially say that any counselor can have an eye to put on the agenda, that there's a process that the agenda is created, the council president can certainly have his input into what the agenda may be, but if a counselor wants to add something to the agenda, he can make a motion to add something to the agenda, which I think was, he just tried to do.
So the motion that's been made formally before the council body, this isn't a case where if a counselor requests an idea or a proposal, have it public hearing, or be set down, or public hearing, or be moved along to be explored further, that's not something a counselor could simply request if the council permits to put on the agenda? It has to be done formally? I guess is my question.
I'm not sure I'm following you, but if.
So, so I look very, very commonly. Does a counselor who wants to put an item on the agenda have to get the formal approval of all other letting counselors, such as what Counsel Cahill just showed?
Again, traditionally and by the council practice, a request is made of the council president to put something on the agenda. If that avenue does not seem to bring it to the council by way of the agenda, a council can move, once the agenda is set, to add something to the agenda, which Counsel Cahill I think just did.
But if it's not specified either in the charter or in any ordinance, is it just past practice, the council would accommodate all the counselors who have ideas to better the city?
The Roberts Rules of Oil, which we have applied on before, have essentially outlined what I just told you.
So I guess I ask you advice on what would a counselor such as myself do? Should I want to have an issue brought for the council, so that we can hear everybody's idea of the formal set?
A motion was made, it's seconded presumably, to add that item to the agenda.
Thank you. Counsel Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could, could I just go to the council president and ask him to put something on the agenda?
It's done, I'm all over the place, and that's certainly a way of doing it as well.
So I guess, I have no more questions, Attorney Vitale, so I don't know what any of the other councilors do. Any other new business? I want, oh, I'm sorry, no, I guess I would like to formally request publicly that you place this item on the agenda. I came to you in August with a proposal, I asked you to deliver it to the councilors as well as Mike Donovan, the mayor, a number of other people. That was in August. We attempted to address any of the concerns of the council as well as yourself, came back to you recently, and again, was told we cannot have it set down. Just to sit down and debate, I'm not asking the councilors to vote on this side, I'm not asking them to debate the marriage of the bond bill, I just wanted it to be set down on the agenda. We can all answer questions, I mean, councilors here may have some valid points, let's have this out there for discussion. So I guess that's why, I request you, Mr. President, so please set this down on the agenda in a timely fashion.
Sure, and as I, I believe I indicated to you today, that this was planned to be put on the agenda for the November meeting, and I think as many councils had concerns that they wanted to hear from Mike Donovan and Kathy Latham, because everybody's opinions are valuable, yours, everybody on the council, all the issues that could be set down, everybody wants them done, as are the school issues, and everyone wishes we had a lot of money to do everything. So, you know, that being said, I think it's important that not to make decisions in a vacuum, that we have as much detailed information as possible when it comes to the future finances of the city. I found tonight very informative, and I'm sure you did, and all the councilors did as well.
I appreciate.
It's not my intent to stifle any opinion or suppress any opinion or any debate or any argument, and, you know, and I'm hoping that it happens in November, that the issue will be addressed.
Mr. President, just respond to that. I don't think we have communicated today, but I'm glad to be at least considering it down the line, August, September, October, November, that's a significant amount of time just to have something set down to be brought to the public's attention to have debated. Thank you for letting me speak.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, Counsel Reston, privileged. I don't like what happened here today. I think everything should go through the chair, and I think you lost control of the speech today.
Thank you. Any other statements? Any other new business? Motion to adjourn?
I have to say.
Counsel Ford.
If I threw the chair, it wouldn't have lost control of the meeting, that was the problem at the beginning, wasn't it?